Call this meeting the Carthage City Council order. Chief Martin, would you please give the invitation?
Yes, Father. We come together tonight to honor you and serve this community in a way that would be pleasing to you. We thank you, Father, for your grace and ask your forgiveness when we fall short. Right now, Father, I would ask that you peer into the hearts of each of us gathered in this room as we take a moment to reflect on the contribution that our friend Kate Gilton has made in our lives individually and in this community through her role as a leader. She will be missed by both family and friends, but because of you and the sacrifice of your son, we are comforted with the knowledge that her suffering on earth has been traded in for a heavenly reward. I pray, Father, that we live our lives with courage in accordance to your will so that someday we might reach the same reward. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, Brenda, if you would please call the roll.
Peterson.
Present.
Siguantes.
Present.
West.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
All right, I know you've all had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the October 28-25 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the minutes of the October 28 meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Next on, we will move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Okay, Betsy Flanagan, Inovaun, County Club Road. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Carthage Historic Preservation. We initiated a community outreach committee a couple of years ago, and we are really proud to have two projects that have been completed. It's taken us a while, but we've been able to accomplish these two projects, one of which are the veterans banners that you've seen outside around the square and around town. We are honored to recognize the veterans from Carthage who have served our country. And we hope as more of those brackets are added to leg poles, we will be honoring more and more veterans. We have a waitlist that has started. Our committee members, Sally Stewart and Beth Strike, are the ones who spearheaded the project, and we also received assistance from the DFW. And of course, CWP so graciously and generously agreed to put up the banners. So I personally, as a former Army wife, I'm really thrilled to be able to recognize veterans from our community from the Civil War on up to current times. So I hope you all have appreciated that and again want to thank Sally and Beth for spearheading that project. Our other project that our committee came up with is our coloring book. We were looking for, we had a discussion about how we try to foster an appreciation for the amazing history here in Carthage, and our particular focus were younger people. And so we decided to create this coloring book. There was one done back in 1979. We wanted to focus on seventh graders because that is the grade where they study Carthage history. And so this year, we were able to provide free coloring books to all of the seventh graders and with a little help from the seventh grade teachers, we focused on some of the places that they talk about, some of the people they talk about. And the future plan is to provide free copies to seventh graders. We received assistance from Carthage Community Foundation and Carthage Printing, so we're very grateful for that. In the book is a QR code that links to the CHP website, and it has lots more information about things in the book and even additional information. I would, you know, really encourage you to buy books. They're $12, cash or check, at the visitor center, the library, the chamber, and the county clerk's office. And there's a lot of really interesting information and a lot of amazing people who came to Carthage after the Civil War in particular and really made huge contributions to Carthage and helping it to grow. There is a mayor who asked men and boys to go out and capture squirrels and bring them to Central Park so that community could enjoy these little squirrels. And I'm sure CWP appreciates that. Mayor probably would like his name. There, if you've been, I don't know how long it might have been since you've been in the Carthage Library, the original building, which is amazing if you look at the woodwork, has two fireplaces. It's just beautiful. And there is a story about a plaque that was donated or dedicated in memory of Ruth Hall by her parents. And so there's a story on the, through the QR code link that talks about Ruth Hall and her story and what her parents did to help with the building of the Carthage Library. And so there's that kind of information, information about the parks. Thomas Salmon, who got his start in Carthage, became a millionaire making soap, salmon soap, and was involved with the dedication of municipal parks. So anyway, lots of really great information, $12. It will help fund future free gifts of the books to Carthage R&amp;I seventh graders. And I'm really proud of Carthage Historic Preservation, our community outreach committee, who's really trying to reach out and share the amazing history of Carthage. So, thank you.
Betsy. Betsy.
Yes.
The banners look phenomenal. I've heard about them for so long, and you just, they are just breathtaking up, and everybody wants to stop and read each one.
Yes, I'm so thrilled to have that project finished. And we worked, we collaborated with Vision Carthage, and we have to collaborate more with them in the future and get more banners up. We would love, you know, all the way from Central down Garrison and all around the square and everything.
They're wonderful. Thank you.
How did they get on, how does a banner request get on the queue?
I'm sorry.
Get on the list?
There's a waitlist. I should mention that the banners do cost $75, but there is a waitlist. You don't have to pay right now, and you just call the Vision Carthage phone number, and they'll put you on a waitlist. You have any friends or family members you want to honor, we'd be thrilled to add more banners.
And those are available where?
The coloring books?
Yes.
They're available at the visitor center, at the Boots Court Motel, and the library, the chamber, and the county clerk's office in the courthouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Please step the microphone, state your name and address.
My name's Regina Wells, and I live at 2026 South Maple here in Carthage. And I'd like to give a heartfelt shout out to two veterans on our council. One is a guy that I met a while ago, and life's been fun. And another is sitting right in front of all of us, who you both put a lot of years in, a lot of time, and a lot of dedication into the military. And now I need Mrs. Mayor, please.
Mrs. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor. I'm the boss right now, so you can mind turn down to the front.
Okay, yeah. And I know it's not my first day, but we didn't have a meeting, but an honor given and your pretty wife allowed to open that. It's something my daughter and I started years ago, doing quilt of hours randomly and sometimes, you know, I had time. And it will be registered on quilt of hours.
Wow.
That's beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
I mean, I can see it over in your picture.
Wow.
I know they hit the picture.
Yeah. Wow.
Oh, my gosh. That is beautiful.
And you two stay here, please. And for all those years that you were a military wife, I didn't have that privilege, but there is a pattern called the log cabin, which the woman is in charge of keeping things together. So we have something in your honor, too.
Oh, my goodness.
You can help her with that.
Oh, gosh.
Is a memory.
Wow. Oh, that's gorgeous. I was asking.
That's beautiful.
Yes, just beautiful.
This would have taken me, well, there's no asking, but there would have been years. But thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Did Ron give you that? Tried to avoid getting honeydews? He give you those tasks?
No, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, pardon?
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
You may honor. No, I don't.
Yes, there was an anonymous, I don't know if it was meant to be anonymous or not, but there was an anonymous gift to one of our World War II veterans that came up for the parade and to see his banner. And the family was overwhelmed with the kindness shown by this community. And when they presented him with the quilt, that will remain anonymous, I can't think, on behalf of Carthage, I can't thank you enough. It meant the world to the family. I mean, I felt it. I'm sure you did as well.
That was amazing.
Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening?
I will just say that the veteran that received the anonymous quilt was my cousin, Roy, which is 91, and I believe he may have been the oldest veteran participating over the weekend here. And he really did appreciate it.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
He got informed who it was from.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we will move on to reports to standing committees. First one, Budget Ways and Means. Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Budget Ways and Means Committee meeting was not held for lack of business. So our next meeting will be the second Monday of next month. Goodness gracious, I had that down. Second Monday of the eighth, December eighth, 5:30, council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims, Derek?
Yes, the CIAC met this evening. The, other than the claims report, which was approved and will be upcoming on our agenda shortly, the only other item of substantive business was our open meetings policy, which we already had in place to square with the Sunshine Law. There were a couple revisions added to further square that with the Sunshine Law. That was approved by the committee, and you will see that later on this evening, is Resolution 2103. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Public Safety, we have neither the chairman nor the vice chairman. I know, David, you sit on anything you want to report? There is one item, I know we're between meetings.
I'm not on safety anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. All right. Well, does anyone else like to care on public safety? They are between meetings. We do have one item on the agenda tonight, which is a change to the police and fire tent pension fan, the pension plan that we will address. So next one will be Public Services. Jana?
We're between meetings, but today Tracy and Richard and I met with Jonathan from the Y to discuss next year's, of the, next year of the Y possibly taking over services for the pool again, and we're working on that right now. And our next meeting should be November 18.
Okay, thank you. Next one will be Public Works. Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Public Works met on the fourth. The, there were really four items of business. The first was our HH and Chapel Road sidewalk project. And Joe Sia, please feel free to correct me if I missed anything here, but some new federal legislation was passed that altered the, kind of the timelines of, we were rebidding that project, and the rebid date we missed by a day. Therefore, the committee voted to actually pause rebidding that momentarily. It's an 80-20 tap grant with MoDOT. So we're looking into revising the sidewalk plan a little bit to save some money, and MoDOT is on board with that. They're not, you know, the grant is not in jeopardy or anything like that, but due to some of the timelines, we're going to go back and slightly revise the stages in which that project is done. But the committee certainly didn't want to eliminate that project, especially with grant money secured. So it will go forward. It'll just be potentially more piecemeal. Secondly, on our agenda was an easement of ingress and egress granted for the industrial park. Currently, it's landlocked, more or less, and a entity, the Swearengen Family Farms, owns a right to that easement, or yes, owns the property and has granted a right to that easement. And the committee approved that moving forward.
The easement has not been approved.
Oh, yes, good point. That approved them to discuss with the entity, negotiate, if you will, that easement. Thank you, Tracy. And finally, we had two change orders that were approved. One, the Macon Street culvert, box culvert project. There was water found under the subsurface, required additional work. It was a $13,000 increase. The committee approved. And then our Airport Road and Hazel Road widening project. There's new box and piping that's necessary, and we're going to extend that time just slightly for project date to December 31st. That was a $13,000, also right at $13,000 change order that was approved. So yeah, that was where our items of business, and we will meet again on the first Monday, gosh, back to back there, first Monday of Tuesday of December. Golly, apologies for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now we'll entertain reports from special committees and board liaisons. Anyone? Ron?
Yes. Well, since I wasn't here at the last council meeting, I wanted to update you a little bit. Since the last meeting I attended, we did have a city code meeting. That meeting detailed a lot of the department heads, along with the city judge for the city, and we had some very good discussion. I think it lasted a little over an hour and a half, thereabout. We looked at maybe needing to update some of the ordinance, but at this time, that's still on hold there. In addition to that, I, along with Jana and Beth, attended a meeting down at Aurora, referenced no sense in city code violation. I was kind of disappointed there because it was geared more towards the larger cities, renovating property and what have you. Didn't really give us much, much enforcement as far as our city improvements, except that they did talk about a, in Springfield, they're doing a kind of a citywide curb deal where they'll take two blocks, and if all the citizens on those two blocks could get together and do some type of renovation, improving their properties, whether it be roofs, new windows, or even curbside appearance, that the city, Springfield, would give $1,000 to each home as long as they spend up to $1,000 in improvements. But at this time, I don't think our city has the ability to do that. So anyway, that is where I was at on that. Also, in reference to the codes and what have you, the mayor and I myself had a meeting with the city prosecutor, and we're going to be having another meeting soon, mid-part of December, on the city codes, and we'll bring that information to the committee and see where we're going to go from there. I also attended the Veterans Day deal at the American Legion Dunham Memorial Hall, and our mayor was the speaker there, and I was very impressed, and he gave an excellent speech to the veterans and what have you. And I even got a picture with Dave's second, third, once-removed cousin.
Yeah, first cousin, once-removed.
91 years old. He was a very nice gentleman, and he was very appreciative of the quilt that he received. And my wife tried to make it a anonymous, but some people just can't keep it away from them. That's all at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Jana?
The Harriet S. Truman Transportation Committee. Tracy and I will be, will be attending a meeting in Springfield next Wednesday. It's their planning and prioritization workshop for MoDOT, and we're going to go there to make sure that the HH and Chapel Road roundabout stays at the top of the list for us, so.
Are you already the local chairman or president? You've already taken office? All right, good. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Beth?
Yes, I had attended the Boots Foundation meeting this, I can't remember my days of the week anymore, but it was, I believe it was this week. So, but just to let everybody know that the span of the reach that we have in terms of Route 66 with the visitors that come here and how pleased they are to be staying, and I think they have great ambassadors for the staff, are very accommodating and supportive and welcoming of our visitors. So I think that carries a lot of goodwill when they leave here, and I think that's important. And also, they're getting ready to really winterize the cabins and do some touch-ups and repairs and, you know, looking at investigating some of the challenges that come with an older property. But I'm learning a lot because of my second meeting, and I just think they have such a great way to really leave a great impression on our community. So it's a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports of special committees or boards? Jack?
The CWP will meet next week, Thursday, Wednesday, I think, 30. And Jana has or will volunteer to be the liaison. And Janet has, has or will volunteer to be the liaison, as I will be, in San Antonio for a couple of weeks.
He's paying me to do it.
Can't wait, it's a great place. But other than that, there's nothing to report.
Okay. Derek?
I would just very briefly note regarding planning, zoning, and historic preservation, they remain in deliberations and discussions regarding the historic design guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Ray?
The Lake Board is meeting as we speak. And I will end up getting the information and have a report for that next time.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to my report. First of all, as, as everyone knows, we, we lost Kate Gilpin in the not-too-distant past. Don't know any specifics with regard to, I've been queried by several with regard to funeral services and that sort of thing. I don't have any information right now. Once we do get some information, we'll put it out to you. I was able to reach out, or attend, rather, the Carthage Tech Center 60th Anniversary Cookout last week, which was very fascinating. And had the opportunity to take with Gage Tiller, the tech director, tech center director, take a tour of the facility and that sort of thing. I had not been in the tech center since it was first opened, basically in the early 60s or mid 60s down on River Street. So, I commend to you an opportunity, if you get a chance to go out there and take a look at it. It's pretty fascinating there, doing some great, great stuff over there. I was able to also attend the tree board meeting here recently. Again, the conversation, as Jack would understand, it's all about the emerald ash and what we're going to do and how they're going to go about that going forward, as well as incorporating some of the gifted trees that CWP and others have provided to them. So, they're, they're working through that, they're working hard on it. Ron already mentioned that we are working the ordinance enforcement effort, which is direct response, I know to all of you, some citizens have requested. And we're looking at that across the board. We've had several meetings already. And I, I think there's some identifiable way ahead that we'll be able to make some progress here and answer some of the needs and requests of our citizens. St. Anne's had their annual chili supper, which of course is a fundraiser, which was good. Excellent chili as usual. And it seemed very well-attended too. So, and I saw some of you there as well, so my hats off to you for that. CEDC had, had a board meeting. We were able, Tracy and I are both able to attend that. And activities in terms of the, the park, the, the industrial park, and those types of things are all continuing. And they're still working hard to do what's right to promote the growth and for our city going forward. So, looking forward to that. Derek is championing the Bridge Committee, which is continuing its work. As you well know, we've got several bridges across the city that are challenged. And none of them are inexpensive. And we're working through that under Derek's leadership to make sure we get a plan going ahead. I did just get some questions this week. In fact, Josiah will probably address it. But Oak Street was shut down for a relatively short period of time. But I tell you, it only needed to be shut down about five minutes before people were already calling me asking, "Is that closed forever?", which was their fear. So, that was just a spruce up in conjunction with, we're actually kind of in direct coordination with Vision Carthage in, in recognition of the, and identification of the 100th Anniversary, Route 66 coming up. So, there'll be some more information coming on that. But Oak Street is not condemned and shut down yet. So, if you hear that, that was temporary. And it, it was reopened this afternoon when I came back over. I was able to go to the Chamber Coffee last week at the Pro 100 Realty South of Town. It was very well-attended. But what was unique about it was Julie Reams, our chamber director, was not there. And that's because she was in Jeff City to receive an award for the local Carthage chapter. And specifically, it was the Chamber of Commerce executives of Missouri who look across the, what the chambers across the state are doing and recognize excellence when they see it. And for those of you that don't know, I know Janet and others do, but Julie has a program, which is, and it's an Empowering Women, which is a, I think, monthly or quarterly luncheon. They have, they bring in a guest speaker and make a presentation, I think generally out the Leggett Center. And it's, it's taken a lot of, of great work. And they're getting tremendous accolades out there. And that was recognized by, at the state level as the best-in-state program or campaign by a, a small chamber. So, our hats off to Julie and the chamber for continuing to do stuff and being recognized at the state level for what they're doing. They do have a partner program as well to the, the Empowering Women's Luncheon. And it's the Men's Leadership Breakfast. You know, the women don't get up quite as early as the men do, so they can do men at breakfast. And they're trying to step that up a little bit as well. So, they'll, they'll continue to move forward on that one. But I commend both of them to you, if you haven't done, if you haven't attended either. We did have Veterans Day. We had both the, the ceremony down Memorial Hall, which we have annually. Ron stayed awake throughout my remarks, and I was pretty impressed with his ability to do so. But I'm not sure how much coffee he consumed. And we also had the, the short parade that evening down around the square. And as, I'm not sure we did as, as good of a job as possible in terms of promoting that and advertising it. But it was great to see and great to have that honor the veterans that evening. So, that was well-done. Yesterday, several of us were able to attend a CEDC-hosted breakfast with Representative Bill Owen. He, I think he's 160-something. He, he basically represents Springfield, Greater Springfield, and, and the Springfield area in Green County. He's a state representative. And he gave a presentation along the lines of the same thing you talked to Ron about when they were down at the Missouri Municipal League Conference in Aurora a week or so ago. And it's all about nuisance property and how you can deal with some of the initiatives that the state is taking to empower municipalities with state statute to help clean up properties that are underutilized, they're under-repaired or maintained. Sometimes it's an absentee landlord. But it'll go right in line with what we are trying to do across the city. So, we'll have continued conversations with, with Bill Owen. And that was, that was very well-done. And this evening, just so you know, we had a ribbon cutting on the north side of the square in the old Carthage Hardware Building, which is now the Serendipity Boutique, I guess is the best way to say. And so, there are crafts and, and operations in there, all of which are designed to directly support a nonprofit, to include wounded warriors or Art Central, those types of things. So, if you haven't a chance to get over there yet, it's, Sally and Rick Stewart are running that. And I commend to you, get a chance to get over there and see what they've got going on. You, you may be, find it very interesting and fascinating. Again, it's focused on nonprofits. And finally, we do have sadly the, the empty seat in Ward 1. I have to date already three applications to fill that seat. We're going to close the application window tomorrow afternoon and close the business. And next week, I will go through to talk to all the applicants. Derek, I'm going to ask you to talk to them as well. And then I'll come to full council with the nomination to replace, or to fill the, the empty seat down there. And that concludes my report tonight. So, if you have any questions you may have. And now we will move on to reports of council members. And Derek, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, first and foremost, I'm obviously deeply saddened that Kate passed. But she often talked about her husband with me a lot. And he was a big golfer. And I remember him growing up playing junior golf, so I'm glad there. I know they're playing golf and baking pastries right now together. Secondly, I would just note, as the mayor mentioned, the, our Bridge Committee met a week ago Thursday. And we're still kind of in the first phase. Before we can tackle this giant, you know, funding and how could we actually get these replaced, is we got to size up the beast first. And so, as we continue to do that, not only on the financial side, but also, right now, the big question is kind of delineating the rights and responsibilities of all the relevant players in this, big one being railroads. So, I was able to finally get in touch with a GNW Railroad. I can't pronounce it, it's like Janice and Wyoming Railroad. And we now have a dialogue between them and Union Pacific, as well as some real estate people with GNW. And we're going to, we're all on the same page moving forward now as to whose responsibilities lie where. And that will allow us to make more informed decisions as we move into funding and, and the like. So, that's kind of an update there. It is a, it is a big beast. But John Hacker with the Globe also sat in, just for the council's knowledge, sat in that meeting. And he expects to write a story in the coming week or two. So, just, just so everyone's aware when they, when they see that. But that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Gennaro?
Not this moment, Mayor.
All right, Ray?
I apologize to everybody for my late arrival. And other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Jack?
Class of 1964 had several veterans. And I want to point out that Lynn Welty, I don't know what her married name was, but it's Lynn Welty in high school, was a nurse in Vietnam. She passed away the eighth. And those nurses, I understand, had a pretty rough time. So, I just wanted you people aware of that. There are other classmates that served. Robert Rousseau, which you're familiar with, was shot by a sniper. Someone you never hear about is Jim Wine. Did two tours. He got shot in the forehead, bullet bounced off his forehead during the Tet Offensive. And he survived. And then there was Wesley Tilton, who I believe was highly decorated during the Vietnam War. Can't name all of them, I don't know all of them. But there were several in our class that served. But especially with mostly male, but with female, with, with women. Beautiful lady, very dedicated. So, I just wanted to give her a shout out.
Okay, thank you. David?
I will definitely miss Kate. Since she closed her business, I always enjoyed her chocolate dipped strawberries. They were awesome. She could actually make a wonderful fruitcake, which is hard to believe, so I can make a good fruitcake. But man, she could, so I'll definitely miss some of those things from Kate. The Veterans Parade, it was short, but it was very nice. I thought it was great. I did run into people that didn't even know it happened. So, I guess we need to figure out how to publicize that a little better. The two people that I ran into on the square only saw it on the Memorial Hall sign. So, that's how they heard about it, so. But that's it, thank you.
Beth?
Yes, I, while I'm, I did owe the fruitcake. I never thought I would like a fruitcake until I received one that Kate made for Christmas. And, yeah, so, and I'll miss her too, in a lot of ways. Very spunky, very fiery at times, and very generous as well. In terms of veterans, I went to the program at the Memorial Hall as well. And in Ward 4, we have Tom Barlow, also Dan Curry. And Julie Ferguson lives in, or Anderson, lives in Ward 4 still, I believe. And her parents were both, Dick and Twyla Ferguson were both. I think there are banners on the corner by Kate's old building. And also, Mike and Diane Hayes both served in the Navy. And they've been very quiet about it. So, I just want to recognize them as well for their service, as well as the mayor and Ron. And the other thing is, I'm very pleased to hear about the code enforcement work. I know I've talked to Josiah about it. I get, I, a lot of people that I know, including myself, are very concerned about being able to get that moving forward. So, I'm looking forward to the progress on that as well. And I think there was one more thing. Let's see, did I have? Other than that, I think that's probably it right now. But thank you.
Okay. Janet?
Well, the Carthage Police Academy last Monday night was exciting. Beth and I are taking that class. It's wonderful. We learned about DWI enforcement from the newly-ranked corporals Brady Luce and Jacob Ransom. And you probably remember them from the, the ceremony we had the week before that they became corporals. We learned how they perform drug recognition evaluations and how to perform field sobriety tests. So, now we're well-aware. No. And I just wanted to thank those officers. But next week, we do get to go to the gun range at MSSU and learn about firearm safety and department weapons policy and shoot firearms, so.
So, watch out.
Yeah. I did attend the, the CEDC housing meeting yesterday with the mayor. And Jack was there. And that was very informative on how to improve our community. And I think there's a lot of programs that we can set in place pretty quickly with some funding from area banks and foundations that could make a big difference in our town. And I attended the Empowering Women Luncheon yesterday that Julie put on. And she had a physician from Freeman come and talk about women's issues. And it was very interesting. And she collected toys for the Laverne Williams part, Christmas party for children. So, it was like a doubly-good thing that Julie was doing there. And I will miss Kate too. And the last time I talked to Kate, we were arguing in council chambers. And she never lost her fire. And even though we were arguing, we respected each other. And I, I've liked her for a very, very long time. So, she will be missed. And I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Ron?
Yes, my wife and myself visited with Kate just about a week before her passing. And we visited with her for about an hour. And when my wife got the message, it just devastated me. From when we seen her then, and within a week, she had passed. And she is going to be well-missed. Second, I haven't heard anybody say anything about dedicating the circle after her. Are they going to do a dedication for the circle with our maple leaf emblems out there by Casey's? They just finished that up. And they did an excellent job, Josiah. I was worried about it to start off with, but they did do a very good, good job of building that up around the maple leaf. They put some plants in there just, I guess, in the last day or two. But I hope we see some color in the spring. That is all kind of green. And last, I had an individual come in and see me at the house yesterday due to the backed-up traffic on Fairview by the Fairview School. Evidently, they're all sitting there on the road and they couldn't even get down the street coming into town. And I told him, "I'll talk to the chief about that or what have you." And I, one other time, we had a problem with that, and I thought we got it solved. But I guess the, the parents are insisting on getting in line to pick up their children. And that's just something we're going to have to need to look at. And other than that, that's all, Mayor, for now.
Okay. Sally, since you're here, I'll ask, is there a plan to do some sort of ribbon cutting or anything for the, the roundabout?
We're working with the police department today to figure out a safe way to have a dedication. We still maybe are planting something with some color for winterfall, otherwise it will be spring. I talked with Julie Reams at the chamber about a date. And it probably won't be within the next two weeks, probably after two weeks. We want to be sure that we invite the people that really supported it. We want to be sure the work is mostly done, we don't let it slip on the grassy.
It'd be a little muddy right now.
We think we have a good plan, but give us two weeks at least.
They did an excellent job.
They did. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Richard had to go, and so did Tracy. A little visit. All resolved.
All right. Anything else, Ron?
No.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to report to the officer of the city. Bill?
Nothing tonight, I'm afraid.
Jason?
No.
It's starting early, it's working to our advantage, looks like. Josiah?
I, I didn't get the memo. Oak Street Bridge is not going to be closed much more than one more day. The guys are going to be sealing the surface. The guys are going to be sealing the surface tomorrow morning. Hopefully, we'll have that opened up. It does take some, a few hours of dry time for that sealer to dry, so hopefully by end of day, 2:30, 3 o'clock, we'll have that open back up. And it's already looking a lot different than what it did before. So, I think with a little touch-up painting, and we've got some, maybe some hangers that are eventually going to get built and put in place to put some flowers there too. So, all cosmetic. One thing, I know Derek's touched on it, the P&amp;Z with the historic guidelines, there's a lot of interesting, not debate, that's not the right word, but a lot of interesting discussion, and it is very in-depth. It is going to take some time to work through that committee. I especially don't envy the new members of that committee. There's a lot of big decisions to make, and we will get through it, and hopefully by first part of next year, we'll have something in place, and things will be rolling. Progress is being made, though.
Just for you, just so the council, just to refresh, when the committee will send up a recommendation, you will be the approving body for adopting that. There's no clarification, make sure we're clear there. Wait, just a second.
As far as ongoing projects, the road riding project on Airport Drive continues to progress throughout there. We're looking at possibly scheduling, well, the contractor is, some asphalt work to be there in the first part of December. So, we are getting closer there. I did also meet with or discuss with the Jasper County Levy Board. I will begin to attend some of those meetings, just working with them as a liaison, working with them as a liaison from the city's standpoint, as far as possibly working to try to get that levy certified with some of the new floodplain maps that are coming out and everything. It's really important and crucial that we work towards getting that levy certified and keep our floodplain map to the minimum, so those areas are not impacted in the business district down on the north end of town. So, with that, I believe that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Richard?
As was previously reported, the Kellogg Lake Board is meeting tonight, and normally, I'm not a voting member, but I like to attend those. So, since they're meeting tonight, I'm going to get a quick update and review tomorrow at Kellogg Lake from Jackie, who's the chairperson of that committee. She's been working diligently to keep me on board with the progress and the needs of that board. So, if you guys haven't been out there for a while, you should go look. I think that Park Screw's done an excellent job getting it ready for the winter, and it's looking pretty sharp, I feel. Park staff, they've been trying to winterize. That takes a lot of time, that, you know, it's not an everyday occurrence, so it slows us down in other processes. But if you see something, especially a trash can around town that has been neglected, please feel free to call me, let me know, and I'll go out and pick it up for somebody else, or we'll try to get that taken care of as quick as we can. Memorial Hall, as everyone has mentioned, has been busy ever since I've been here. We haven't had a weekend that something hasn't been going on, and that's going on again this weekend. You can get an early start on your Christmas shopping. I think it's a vintage market, so they might have some good stuff this Saturday. And the golf course crew, one and all, has been asking me on the progress regarding the house, which will be voted on later, and so they wanted me to personally express their thanks to every member of the city council who hopefully will get this approved sooner than later. They're looking forward to it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the sales tax and use tax report for the month of November. And our sales tax came in at $262,558.95. It was up 7.54% from the same month last year, year-to-date. We are actually down 0.69%, or $9,000. However, we're still on target for our budgeted amount. Also, the use tax came in at $118,444.02. That was down 1.06% from the previous, from the same month last year. And year-to-date, it is up, or I'm sorry, it's down 3.12%. However, it's still, it is also on target with our budgeted numbers. As far as the Veterans Day parade goes, I do know that Melissa worked tirelessly making calls to get individuals involved in the parade, and so she, I have to commend her for her work on that, and we'll look at the advertising of the event and see what we can do to improve that. And the roundabout, we have to remember that Chad Carney has done a lot of work on that roundabout, and he should be commended for his work, and it's all finally coming together. This has been a project that's gone on for about three years. We've done a lot of impatiently waiting, and it is finally coming together, and it looks very nice. And that's all I have. Actually, I want to turn it over to Miranda to take up the rest of my time.
I did put at the back of the packet the election information. As you all know, Derek and Gennaro, Jack, Beth, and Jana's seat, and as well as the mayor's seat, are up for reelection in April. The filing dates will be December 9th through the 30th. We'll be open 8 to 5 every weekday unless it is Christmas Eve or Christmas, so.
Do I have to submit a report that I have a good moral character? Well, if you're willing to file a false official statement. Anything else, Miranda?
No, that is all.
John?
Nothing tonight.
All right, fine. We'll now have the report of the Claims Committee.
The Committee on Claims filed a report in the amount of $1,920,922.57.
I move that we approve the November 13th Claims Report.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the Claims Committee report. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report is accepted. We'll now move on to old business. Miranda?
The second reading of Council Bill 2568, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bricer LP to provide the Carthage Fire Department with the compliance engine for a term of three years in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion?
Did you say that, Beth?
Now I did.
Council Bill passes. Next council bill.
The second reading of Council Bill 2569, an ordinance of the city of Carthage naming the streets within municipal park around the rodeo arena.
Any discussion?
Yes, on this one, I just wanted to let everybody know once again that Roxanna Willard from the Jasper County Youth Fair brought this forward a couple months ago. We went through the procedure of approving this, and this is just to provide the vendors more information on where the roads are and where to go, and for safety for first responders. I think it's a, I want to thank her for bringing that forward to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Cast your votes. Council Bill passes. Next council bill.
The second reading of Council Bill 2570, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Newco for the purchase and installation of a new pump station at the Carthage Municipal Golf Course in the amount of $189,062.77 in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion?
This is a turnkey operation. In other words, the pump people do it all.
That is correct.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Council Bill passes. Next council bill.
The second reading of Council Bill 2571, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Carthage and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the installation and maintenance of ornamental lighting at the intersections of Route 571 and Airport Drive and Route 571 and Elk Street in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion?
We had this discussion, but to clarify, all the lights in the city are not owned by the city. And these particular lights were granted to the CWEP on those roundabouts to manage them. And that was the discussion, and so that's the situation.
Any other discussion? Cast your votes. Council Bill passes. All right, we'll move it on to new business, of which there is none. So, we'll move on to mayoral appointments. I have none to make this week. As I mentioned, we will close the applications for the seat, the vacant seat on the council tomorrow afternoon, and I'll let you know next time, you know, what that looks like. We'll now move on to resolutions. Miranda?
Resolution 2103, a resolution establishing an open meetings and records policy for the city of Carthage, Jasper County, Missouri.
Any discussion? Cast your votes.
Oh, someone needs to motion to approve it.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2103.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2103. Any other discussion? Cast your votes. Resolution passes. Next resolution.
Resolution 2104, a resolution adopting a revised police and fire pension plan investment policy statement as recommended by the police and fire pension plan committee.
Any discussion?
Just a question, does this dovetail with investment procedure with the city in general, or is this a separate?
Separate. It is the police and fire pension plan, and it's realigning their investments. Yeah, and I put some info on your desk that Mike Zeider had put together. He's the new chairman of the pension committee. But, yeah, they realigned the investments, and then there was also some statute language that was added to the policy and just kind of some cleanup through.
But this pension plan is standalone. In other words, it's the police pension fan, plan, right? Has nothing to do with any one else's or other departments' pension plans.
Any other discussion? I entertain a motion to adopt.
I move we adopt Resolution 2104.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt, to pass Resolution 2104. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. Resolution is adopted. All right, we'll now move on to closing comments. The only comment I have is to remind all of you who are up for reelection to make sure that you are getting your paperwork in order, ready to submit appropriately, and look forward to seeing your happy faces here throughout the next year. Other than that, again, I will let you know as we gain more information on Kate's services as it becomes available to us. Other than that, we'll move on to closing comments. Gennaro, anything from you?
Well, I didn't get to know Kate that well, but in the short term, short time I got to know her, she was just a really special person, and I know she'd be in a better place, not suffering, because she talked to me what she was doing in the short time I met her, but she would be really missed. And I know Alan's not here, but he usually talks about the football team. Just want to say good luck to the Carthage football team. Tomorrow, they play Republic. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ray?
I just echo what he said about Kate. She was a wonderful person, and I really enjoyed knowing her, and I've talked with her quite a bit. But anyway, I will miss her, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Jack?
This may be a point of humor, and I'm sorry, but a young man came to our door during Halloween night, but the befuddled look on his face, he said, "Somebody down the street gave me a potato." And he was confused. But then I found out over at Hatcher's that people had a choice, that the kids had a choice. There was a basket of potatoes, or there's a basket of candy. And some people took a potato, and others, if that makes any sense, I don't know. Other than that, no.
David?
You can't pass up a good potato, honey. Bake 'em, mash 'em, fry 'em, you know. So, anyway, well, I hope you're getting your paperwork ready to run for mayor again, so. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Beth?
Oh, just two things I was going to mention is that Sherwin-Williams is sponsoring a drive for items for the residents of St. Luke's, so I thought that would be worthy to think about. And then the other thing is the holidays, that Vision Carthage is putting on for Mondays, I think is really great because people are having a really rough time this season, and I think having a memory that is, doesn't take a lot of money to bring a lot of joy, and yet ideas and follow-through on good people's hearts is important. And I will be on vacation starting next week to go visit, not to be outdone by Alan, but my two granddaughters and their parents in Maryland, and I'll be back, and raring to go, so.
Thank you. Jana?
Well, if anybody's interested in how many trick-or-treaters I had at my house, it was 2,118 this year, so.
Did you run out of potatoes?
We did have enough candy. We had to ration it a little bit at the end, but it's so much fun, and the police department did do the soft closing at the end of the street, which was appreciated. It's a wild time on Grand. Sparkle in the Park is next Monday, is that right? The 24th, at 6 o'clock. It's the, I guess it's the week before, the Monday before Thanksgiving, so everybody can enjoy it with their families. And I wanted to see if Josiah had anything else to say about what's going on tomorrow night.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remain very confident, but it should be a very good football game.
And where is it?
It's here.
There you go.
Saturday, no.
Tomorrow, 7 o'clock.
Bring your cowbells, like, here. I don't know. We can't fire off, although I think it will be heard at the distance, so.
What an exciting time to have a solid team. That's it for me.
And just a reminder, Jana mentioned Sparkle in the Park, it's 1,800 Monday night.
Military time.
All right, Ron?
Yes, I don't report this. I'll not get no sleep tonight. And it's on Veterans Day also. Regina and I are great-grandparents again. Baby Nora was born on Veterans Day, Veterans morning. Seven pounds, two ounces, at 6:34 Tuesday morning. She is the second great-grandkid we have, and I get to rub this in. First grandkid was born on my birthday. Her birthday is two days before mine, but she was born on my birthday. And now Nora was born on Veterans Day, which relates to me, and so she just shook her head and said, "I'm giving up." But we're going to be, we are now great-grandparents, too, and we have another one in May.
December and May.
Yeah, December and May.
Congratulations.
So, we're moving up around that great-grandkid list. That's all, Mayor.
All right, Derek?
Yeah, I just have one thing to note. Betsy, I think those coloring books are phenomenal, and moreover, we absolutely turn and burn coloring book pages in the Peterson house. I'm really excited to pick up two tomorrow. But that's all I have, and with that, I would move that we adjourn.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.